Good afternoon. I'll call to order the June 1st meeting of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. I'm joined today by Commissioners Cronzer, Slack, Gisselman, and Forni. At this time, please be sure your mobile devices are silenced. Our first item of business today is to approve the actions of the May 11th, 2015 meeting. May I have a motion to approve those actions? All right, all in favor? All right, and that carries. Our next item of business is to organize the agenda. We'll determine which items will be continued, which will be placed on the consent agenda, and which items will be discussed. So I will go through the agenda. Item number one is 1513 through 1519 Franklin Avenue East and 2008 Bloomington Avenue South. That's a rezoning application. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we'll place that on consent. Items number two and three, we will take together. They are 3238 Washington Avenue North and 3240 Washington Avenue North. That is a rezoning application. We will discuss those items. Item number four is 3414 25th Street East. That is also a rezoning application. And the petitioner has requested that that item is continued to the June 15th meeting. Is there anyone here to speak on that item? Okay, that item will be continued to June 15th, so two weeks from today. Item number five is Western Line on Second at 2415, 2419, and 2423 Second Street Northeast. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? That is several applications for a seven-unit housing development. Seeing no one, we will put item number five on the consent agenda. Item number six is 3535 through 3543 Grand Avenue South. Several applications related to a new multifamily development. We will discuss item number six. Item number seven is Urban Works Architecture at 617 Lowry Avenue North, 3110 and 3116 Lindale Avenue North, and 3113 and 3117 63 North. Several applications for a new multifamily development. We'll discuss item number seven. And then item number eight is a zoning code text amendment. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we will place item number eight on the consent agenda. So our modified agenda is as follows. We'll continue item number four to the June 15th meeting. Our consent agenda will consist of items number one, five, and eight, and we will discuss items numbers two, three, six, and seven. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? All right, all in favor? And that carries. Next, may I have a motion to continue item number four to the June 15th meeting? All in favor? All right. Next, we'll move on to our Committee of the Whole consent agenda. And Commissioner Slack, could you provide a brief report?
Thank you, President Brown. At the May 14th, 2015 Committee of the Whole, we heard four grouping land sales. And the recommended motion from that evening was to approve the staff report that each of the land sales was consistent with the Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth.
All right, and I will take that as a motion to find that those sales are consistent with the comprehensive plan. Is there a second? All in favor? All right, and that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to the public hearing portion of our meeting. And first, I'll open the public hearing on the items on the consent agenda. That's items one, five, and eight on our agenda. Is there anyone who would like to speak on items one, five, and eight? Seeing no one, I will... One, five, and eight. That is 1513 through 1519 Franklin Avenue East, 2008 Bloomington Avenue South. Item five is a seven-unit housing development on Second Street Northeast, and item eight is a zoning code text amendment. All right, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on those items. Commissioners, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? All right, all in favor? And that carries. We'll move on to our items for discussion now. We'll start with item two. I had mentioned earlier that we'd take items two and three together, but actually, we should take those separately. So we'll start with item two. That's a rezoning at 3238 Washington Avenue North. And Mr. Liska is staff.
Good afternoon, Chair, Commission members. Being that items two and three are very similar, would you like me to address the site-specific differences as the analysis remains the same?
Yeah, and maybe what you could do is you can provide a presentation on both items. We'll have separate public hearings for both of them.
Sure. All right, first off, item two is 3238 Washington Avenue North. The applicant is seeking to add the industrial living overlay district to the existing I-2 The site is 8,888 square feet and is located on Washington Avenue. It's actually a through lot between Washington and Second Street North. So here we have Washington, Second, and the lot runs through. The subject property is just east of Interstate 94, and the structure is a two-story, but due to topography, appears to be a three-story from the rear due to the walkout basement. There is an 18-foot grade change on this parcel, and current uses include office space, envelope packing and printing production use, and general retail sales and services. The 3200 block of Washington and Second is composed of an array of uses, including a cultural entertainment use in the middle of the block. There are two single-family residences to the north of the block, an industrial use, I believe fabrication site, as well as a fast-food restaurant to the south. The applicant is seeking to add the I-lod to permit general retail sales and services. They are not proposing any exterior or interior alterations as a part of this. Staff has not received any comment from the McKinley neighborhood. As a part of the rezoning, CPED has analyzed the application to rezone 3238 Washington Avenue North to include the I-lod based on the following findings. One, whether the amendment is consistent with the applicable policies of the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan and the small-area plan give mixed policy guidance for this proposal. While the proposal seems to be in direct alignment with some policies, it seems to be in direct conflict with others, both within these documents. The property is designated as an urban neighborhood currently in the comprehensive plan. However, the small-area plan, which was adopted by the city council in June of 2013, did change the future land use to mixed use. While the small-area plan has not been formally adopted by the Metropolitan Council, it's expected to be done by the end of the year as part of the comprehensive plan update. Land use policy 1.1.4 is to support context-sensitive regulations for the development and land use, such as overlay districts, in order to promote additional land use objectives. And policy 1.14.2 states to allow industrial uses outside the industrial employment district to transition over time to other uses. This site is outside of the industrial employment district. The small-area plan also provides a brief commentary on this area in particular, noting some challenges faced. It reads, "The small sites located between Second Street North and Washington Avenue North present somewhat of a challenge for redevelopment, as many are small, steeply sloped, and narrow. These may be suitable for small-scale office and light industrial uses." There are already, as there already are a number of residential uses in this section, it may be appropriate for live-work type arrangements. And this is on page 94. "The aforementioned light industrial uses as well as office uses are permitted in the existing I-2 zoning. The live-work arrangement would not be able to be possible without this I-lod." Later in the small-area plan, it suggests that the proposal is not in accordance with the policies suggested. An analysis demonstrates the developmental and redevelopment of the site. Transitioning away from industrial and towards mixed use is limited by land availability. Plan states, "To overcome this challenge, land assembly is necessary. Rezoning a single parcel or two to include the I-lod is not the intent of the future land use policy, but rather would include a larger assembly of parcels." The second finding for the rezoning, whether the amendment is in the public interest or, and not solely for the interest of the individual property owner. Again, to add, the industrial living overlay district here would provide more flexibility for this area. And the small-area plan seems to point out for the assembly of parcels. So given that this is for an individual parcel rather than for a large assembly, it would seem that this is not in the public interest, but rather in the interest of the individual applicant. The third finding, whether the existing uses of the property and the zoning classification of the property within the general area are compatible with the proposed zoning classification. And there are no other industrial living overlay zonings in this area. The nearest property is 3442 Washington Avenue North, just two blocks north of the subject The general retail sales and service has been present on this site and does not negatively impact the surrounding area. The area as a whole has a diverse use of mixed, or diverse uses, like I was mentioning, regarding fast food, cultural uses, single-family, industrial uses. But again, the small-area plan did seem to suggest that a larger land assembly would be necessary for a larger-scale development. Four, whether there are reasonable uses of the property under the existing zoning, and there are reasonable uses. The property does currently have office use as well as the envelope packing use, both of which are permitted. The I-lod would simply legalize the existing general retail sales and services present. Fifth, whether there's been a change in the character or trend in development in the general area in the property in question. The desire to transition the area to a non-residential use is evident through the change in the small-area plan, changing that from urban neighborhood to mixed use. However, there's not been a ton of change in this area. There has been some transition as a whole, but specific to this area, there's been none. Department of Community Planning and Economic Development recommends the city planning commission adopt staff findings for the property 3238 Washington Avenue North and deny the requested I-lod zoning inclusion. And I will be here for additional questions. The applicant is also present.
All right, thank you, Mr. Liska. Commissioners, are there any questions? Commissioner Cronzer?
Yes, is Lowry Avenue a community or commercial corridor?
I'm not sure. I know that the properties are not in the corridor, the use itself.
Right, Lowry's like a half a block south of the parcel. It's likely one or the other.
Commissioners, are there any questions? Maybe we can get an answer to that momentarily. All right. Mr. Liska, I do have one question. In your conversations with the applicant, did you discuss at all a change to commercial zoning rather than industrial living? Or is that the direction they wanted to go? It seems that this might be a stretch for application of industrial living, but maybe not so much for commercial.
Right. The applicant did note that the proposal was to allow for the existing general retail sales and service, but also said that he was interested in possibly adding the industrial living to allow for the conditional use, to allow residential live-work in this property. There's been no application for that at this time, but he did mention that.
And Commissioner Cronzer, I did pull up the land use map. It appears that Lowry at that location is a community corridor. All right, well, if there aren't any other questions for staff, I will open the public hearing on this item. I'd like to hear from the applicant first. And please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is David Benz, and I'm the owner of this property. I've owned this property since 1999. It's, I think it behooves us to discuss what the property is. It was built originally in the 60s as a kind of an office production warehouse area. The upstairs that faces Washington Avenue is approximately 1,500 square feet. Then it's got a stairway that's actually outside of that area that goes down into the lower level, which has another 7,000 square feet. It also includes an office area down there and what we call production area. Part of that area is used for storage, part of it's for a mailing house that uses it. When I bought the property, I leased it, I was using part of the back space for my printing company, and I leased the other space to a company called Absolute Mail. At that time, they took the office space upstairs and the production space downstairs. Or actually, we shared the production space downstairs. After about a year, they said, you know, this upstairs office just doesn't work. It's just, you know, you had to go up and down the stairs. You have to actually go out, or outside the area, then down the stairs, then back in. And it just, you know, it just wasn't a good layout. So they moved their offices into the lower, the lower-level offices. At that time, I started trying to rent the upstairs space. And in the 15 years that I've owned it, I've rented it to zero industrial uses. It's been rented to a barber shop, to a hairstylist. It's been rented to a dress shop, a retail dress shop. I can't remember the other ones. Anyways, none of them are industrial use. And currently, I've got, I had some massage therapists that have rented that space. And so when they went to get their licenses, we said, okay, go, and you have to stop at the zoning office. And then they said, well, it's not zoned for the commercial use. So that's what started all of this. I've done some exploring of the master plan, the above-the-falls, and I think, as I read it, and I'm looking on page 92, it talks about this area. It says, "This area should be used for mixed uses. It should go to a mixed use instead of industrial." And that's on page 192 and on page 111. I'll read it exactly. "Support the redevelopment of this area with high-density mixed-use development, including commercial, light industrial, residential, and/or office uses." And I feel like that's exactly what we're doing. We are, it's exactly what we're doing. And the only real objection I seem to hear was that we're not grouping it with other, you know, assemble, I guess it's called assembling it. These are kind of new terms for me in terms of this. And that's really, from what I've heard, everything from what Andrew said, was the fact that I'm not, the only objection they have is that we're not assembling it, or maybe that's a better use. Well, what we're asking for does not prohibit that assembly in the future, but I don't have the financial means to go and buy out all my neighbors and do that. That's just not in my, my wheelhouse. That's not something I can do. So in the future, if someone wants to assemble all this, I would be open to that. What we're asking for is ability to go forward and be able to use commercial, commercial uses for this property. And when I look at some of the points here, it talks about whether that's in the public interest or not. And for some reason, it, you know, it was deemed not to be, but I don't see how an industrial use is going to be more in the public interest than a hairstylist or a barber that would actually let people in the immediate neighborhood have a service to use. How does an industrial use in 1,500 square feet, number one, you don't get industrial uses, I don't think, in that smallest space? The mailing company that moved out is still down in the lower level. They've been there for 15 years. So I'm, I've got this 1,500 square feet that I'm, that's sitting all alone, that we would like to use for, again, for commercial use. The trends in the area, I think, you know, we've shown it, you know, Burger King went in a number of years ago. You know, my, that upper space of mine has gone from, you know, offices for industrial to commercial uses. I think the trends show that that is what is coming in that area and not, not away from it. That's basically what I had. You know, I don't know if there's any questions that I could ask, answer?
Hi, I just wanted to know if you had had met with the McKinley and Hawthorne neighborhoods, and say, I believe it's in McKinley but adjacent to Hawthorne to get them?
Yeah, we tried. I sent them an email. I called them, and I've been to their office seven times now, and they're never open. They, it's, I don't know if, there's, when you look in the window, there's some things that are growing in there. I mean, they have like potted plants that are growing.
And this is McKinley you're talking about or Hawthorne? Which one?
McKinley.
Okay.
Okay, and I mean, because it's right across the, you know, you just take Lowry and go up to Lindale and take a right, and it's like a block away. So, yeah, I've been there. Like I said, I called, I left messages, I emailed, and just zero response. I don't know if they're still in business. And I've been doing that for a month, so I'm not sure what else to do. You know, I don't have the time to sit there all day and see if someone shows up, so.
Well, I guess, excuse me, my question is along the lines of actually the question that Commissioner Brown asked of staff, and that was, he asked about whether or not there was any other application pending, just to allow for the commercial uses. And it sounded, from what we heard from staff's answer, is that there's not, and that the main issue between the application that's pending and a commercial use application is that you want to retain the ability to have...
The industrial use.
Understood.
You know, so I mean, I thought this was the perfect answer. I thought that's kind of what this was for, was, would allow the commercial use and the industrial use. I mean, I don't want to, I think the industrial use is important in the space that it's in and provides jobs for local residents. But the, but they don't use the upstairs space at all, and there's no plan to. So I want to be able to put commercial into that space. If I go, if I transfer the whole thing to commercial, then, you know, then I'm in conflict with the industrial part of it. So it's kind of a unique property, I guess, in that way. It's like a walkout basement. I mean, we're built into the side, you know, the, probably a million years ago, the river was that high or something, you know? But it's built into that slope. So when you, people walk into the front and they think it's a small building, and then suddenly you look out the back window, or you go downstairs, and, oh my gosh, where did all this come from? You know, it's one of those deals.
All right, Commissioners, any other questions of the applicant? If there are none, we can move on to the next speaker. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item, the rezoning of 3238 Washington Avenue North? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing on this item. Commissioners, are there any further questions, or would someone like to start us off with a motion? Commissioner Lupe here.
I actually have a question for staff. Do you know, or do you have a map that could show where the nearest I-lods are in proximity to this? I mean, do we have many areas?
I don't have a map. There's 3334 here, and it's 34, or 3442 is here, and the address would be 3442, so one block north of that.
So there's one parcel per block for the next two blocks north? Is that what you're saying?
No, there's only one. It's two blocks north of, I mean, specifically this 3342.
Okay, so when, when the above-the-falls plan was done, that was left that way for a reason, I assume, and then the rest of this was zoned industrial, I-2?
I believe that I-lod was established within the last couple of years. So yes, it's all I-2, just one parcel, 3442, or it's all zoned I-2. Only one parcel in this area has the industrial living overlay zoning.
I guess my question is, when, when was that one established? And maybe some of the findings were, because I'm not, I'm not remembering that one.
Mr. Wittenberg? Commissioners, I don't recall the exact date or year of that rezoning, but I think it has been within the past five years that that was added to the industrial zoning on that particular block. And it looks like Mr. Liska has the map.
So the subject parcels are these two here, and the I-lod would be up?
And keep in mind, Commissioners, I think we have, if I'm not mistaken, industrial zoning basically from Plymouth Avenue approximately all the way to the northern city limits. And right now, I think, if I'm not mistaken, we have one industrial living overlay district parcel.
In that whole span, because my next question is on that whole, that's quite a few blocks.
And that did go through the rezoning in January of 2013.
All right, Commissioner Cronzer?
I have a question, I think, for Mr. Wittenberg. So the planning commission approved the above-the-falls master plan a few years ago. Has there been any motion for a rezoning study to match the zoning to that small-area plan?
Commissioner Cronzer, I understand that there, that may be on the long-range planning work plan, which would include actually an entirely new zoning district, which we do not have right now, some sort of business park type of industrial district. But that's not pending within the next six months for sure, potentially.
So on that note, would, would this, if in theory we were fast-forwarding in the future and that would come to pass with this fall, within the guidelines of that recommended zoning, or no, the use that they're proposing today?
You're saying, you're asking Commissioner Lupe here whether the rezonings that are proposed now would likely be consistent with whatever rezoning study we would bring forward in the future? Honestly, it's too early at this point to say whether that would be the case, but I think part of staff's point is that if this area is to be rezoned, that ideally, that would be part of a more comprehensive...
And not a spot...
...analysis, rather than one parcel, one small parcel at a time.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or discussion on this item? Would someone like to make a motion? Commissioner Slack?
I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation to deny the application.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, or please call a roll.
Forni?
No.
Gisselman?
Aye.
Cronzer?
No.
Lupe here?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
So that is three yeses and two no's.
All right, so that motion carries. All right, well, we can move on to our next item, which is right next door to there at 3240 Washington Avenue North. Avenue North, a similar application for rezoning. And Mr. Lisca is also staff.
Thank you, Chair. The property 3240 is seeking to add the industrial living overlay to the existing I2 zoning. The site is 8,829 square feet and is located just north of the previous. So again, here's our 3238, previous application, just north, 3240. It is a through lot between Washington Avenue North, Second Street, uh, North. The site currently has spaces, including office use, a cable assembly and manufacturing operation, as well as general retail sales and services. The 3,200 block of Washington has an array of uses, single families to the north, uh, fast food to the south, uh, cultural entertainment use in the middle, as well as various other industrial uses. The applicant is seeking the ILod to legally establish the general retail sales and service existing on site. And staff has not received any comment from McKinley Neighborhood. As a part of the rezoning, there are five findings that must be addressed. The first finding, whether the amendment is consistent with applicable policy of the comprehensive plan. And again, the comprehensive plan and small area plan provide mixed guidance for this area. While some of the policies seem to align, others do not. The property is currently urban neighborhood. Uh, the small area plan was approved by City Council in 2013. Metropolitan Council has yet to formally approve that. The small area plan has been updated. The future land use has been changed to mixed use. There are a couple of policies within the comprehensive plan that support this, supporting context-sensitive regulation for development and land use, such as overlay districts to promote additional land use objectives, as well as the policy 1.14.2, allow industrial uses outside the industrial employment district to transition over time to other uses. Small plan, small area plan does note the challenges faced with this site being small, narrow, steep. Other direction within the small area plan suggests that for this area to be redeveloped, there has to be an assembly of parcels. Rezoning a single parcel or two to ILod would not be covering a, an assembly of parcels, but rather just a couple. The second finding, whether the amendment is in the public's interest or the interest of the property owner. Again, staff finds that being a single parcel, uh, it's not in the public interest. It is in the sole interest of the property owner.
Mr. Lisca, sorry to interrupt, but since, uh, this, uh, the, the material is very similar to what, uh, what we heard in the last application. It's probably not critical for you to go, go through everything again. I don't know if there's anything you'd like to add that's, that's specific to this property, but if, if not, we can probably move on to the?
Nope. All of the site-specific information has been covered.
Okay. Sounds good. In that case, uh, I'll, I'll open the public hearing on this item and I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first. And please, please state your name and address clearly for the record.
Good afternoon or evening, everyone. My name is Tang Pham. I'm from Vietnam. In 1975, I was in Houston and moved to Minnesota in 1977, summer. And I fell in love with the Minnesota weather. That's the number one thing is I still here because of the weather in here. We have a four season. It's beautiful. And then for the viewpoint of the Asian people who came in here as a refugee, and I see this as just an opportunity for me to travel in a nation that is pretty good for my, for me and for my children and for further generation of my family. And, uh, I do, in 1907, 1905, I purchased the property of 3240. And the reason I, I brought it because I do the business. I, I do the small business and I have to move every three years or five years with the heavy equipment and things like that. And I, we make a decision that we have to choose the one location to locate it and then we have to move. And we look around at our own building and we found that's a tribe of a land over there is a, between is a 94 and Mississippi River. That's a beautiful weather, beautiful landscape, beautiful location. And we see that it's a, a good space for my business to grow. But it's, as the people who represent to us say, that's in the front is Washington Avenue is just an office. And my first one moving in, I use a, a location, it's a bottom from first to second avenue. And I tried to put an office in an upstairs, but this doesn't work for me because it's far away from my work. And every time I go up and down, up and down, and when they need something, they make time to come and up and knock the door and things like that. And I just move down to business, one body and one unit to work. And that's worked very well. And seeing this, which I brought that, I move it out and I, um, have a side to run for two years. Nobody is just coming for whatever. And suddenly the ladies in his come and ran it. And they say this, they will open the facilities just for the, uh, massages and things like that. And one point of view is I'm, for Asian, for Asian people looking at, the massage is the, the prevent activity for health. Therapy is to cure the people who already injured, but massage is prevent that. If you do not have a chance, I don't think so, go to massage, you will feel very good after the massage. And I think that's business should be a little connect to the health. That's what I said. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Yes, please come to the microphone and phone and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Michael Boho. Am I permitted at this hearing? Cause I don't know.
Yes, it's, it's?
Packed out some documents so that you can follow?
Yes, if you have documents, stand out, you can hand them to the clerk.
I have enough for everybody. You can stay right there. Always find it's helpful to have something in front of you that you can look at and kind of understand so you can kind of walk along with me. I'm very visual, so it's certainly helpful for me in going through this consideration. We received, uh, actually on Friday last week, Friday afternoon, after arriving home from a long day work, uh, the agenda for today's meeting. So we were given essentially the weekend to try to figure out a great way to address your concerns, certainly, make sure that we're taking into account, um, you know, your thoughts, your concerns around that particular community and addressing them in a way so as to, um, you know, merge those two things so we can create a, you know, a better program, a better place for people to be able to utilize this, get tax money based from, and just have an overall better city. So we started prior to receiving our denial for today's agenda meeting or suggested denial by trying to reach out to a number of different places. First, we reached out to the community organization. We, like David, our next door neighbor, um, found the same unfortunate issue where we were unable to actually get ahold of the organization that runs the community, which makes you think, well, gee, how connected to the community are they if you can't reach anybody? Next, we decided to reach out to our, um, councilperson, uh, who declined to meet with us, to discuss with us, essentially what we thought was a pretty normal question. We'd like to get a better understanding of your vision of the community. But that wasn't allowed, so we couldn't understand or put together a better way or proposal to be able to help you understand the vision that we have for a building that's not owned by us. We're renters. We can leave there and move somewhere else and open up shop somewhere else. But my wife certainly has a great relationship. We have a great relationship with David, who actually owned the building before, so he owned both parcels. And it's, it's so much fun to move. I'm sure as anybody knows who's ever moved. So it doesn't seem like a great thing to do. So that was some of the research that we did upfront to try to be better prepared for today's meeting to provide you with a really good, clear understanding of what it is that we're trying to achieve. So from that standpoint, I'd just like to address the five points that were made and addressed certainly by, uh, the Department, uh, Planning Community Planning Committee, just so that we're all on the same page. Because the first point they bring up is whether the amendment is consistent with the applica, uh, applicable policies of the comprehensive plan. And I believe it might, I believe that it is. Uh, under the above master, or the Falls Master Plan update of 2013, which luckily I went ahead and included in your packet, it's the last section of your packet, actually. Um, and I believe if you'll turn to page 50, I think it was 59, at the bottom, where it discusses residential mixed use. And particularly, I highlighted the areas where it's noting, when looking at what attracts new residents' development, prime locations are important, especially in urban areas. Residents are looking for amenity-rich communities with a number of destinations, i.e. shops, cafes, parks, et cetera. So in an industrial zone, it's kind of difficult to imagine those things occurring. So again, I think that the ILod seems to kind of merge very well with the analysis that was done. Now, I'm sure there's somewhere in there where you could find some other page. We found this page here. There were some other areas within there. Uh, there were pages in the nineties and so forth that seemed to kind of direct you in the same direction. The idea of, in order to bring people, you need to bring small businesses and people that are selling things and offering different services so that people want to be there and can utilize those areas. I myself, uh, had a house on Minnehaha Parkway, um, on the other side of the city, which I loved. Loved that house. And some of the reasons that I loved that one was because I could walk out my front door and I could go down to my favorite Mexican restaurant and, and walk. It was nice. It was nice to be able to walk around and do that kind of thing. I think that, you know, if we're gonna industrialize this and we see our future being, bringing in more salesy types of things, coffee shops, so forth, boy, something's gotta change. And I think that this is a good change from that standpoint. So I believe that it's applicable with the policies of the comprehensive plan. In addition, and I know it was brought up before, you approved an ILod not quite two blocks away. If I go through your second point, whether the amendment is in the public's interest and not solely for the interest of the single proprietary owner, I think we could have some conflict and discussion around that, cause I think the owner of the building probably feels maybe differently about that. I don't know. I don't own that particular building. But quite honestly, this thing is essentially stating that, hey, look, you know, if there were more parcels being turned over, it might make some sense for us to consider that. Well, look at the three different lots that we're considering here. There's the 30, 30, 3240, there's the 3238 right next door. Both of those are asking for the ILod transfer. The next one over, what I believe you described is the cultural place or the Church of the Angels, or I believe they're also called the AKA Hells Angels, are right next door to that. I'm not sure how many or how popular that might be of a place for everybody to want to go. I think they're some of the best neighbors that you could possibly ever imagine, some of the nicest guys I've ever met. But, you know, I don't think that they're gonna be interested in making any changes, but guess what? The two buildings right next to it are. And you know what? Sometimes it takes one or two to start the process. Then once one or two of those does that, more comes in. So I, I think that we have to be a little more optimistic around that and that we have to look to the future and say, I think based on these two groups wanting to do this, we might have a good start here. To the point three, whether an existing use of the property and zoning classification of the property within general area in question, in question or, um, compatible with the proposed zoning classification, where the amendment has to change the zoning classification of a particular property. It notes here that there are no other industrial overlays in this particular area. Now, the picture that we're looking at is, I believe, within 350 feet of the building, if. Okay. So you were able to find on that document where the other ILod was? Or is that just another couple of buildings down? Block, block down? Okay. It's two blocks down. I could almost throw a rock at the building from the front of my, uh, the rental property that we currently have. So I'm not quite sure what you mean by immediate area, because I can't think of much more immediate than that. The approval, by the way, on that was not done in numerous parcels. It was a single parcel that you approved. However, now, and if you read through it, I actually provided you also with a copy of the actual approval of that particular property, as well as pictures. You notice the pictures look almost the exact same as 3240 property. The other thing that you're gonna notice is the fact that there was no issue with it being a single parcel and approved, which begs the question, why now does it have to be multiple parcels instead of a single parcel? Cause to me, that doesn't make sense. Why did you do it one way for one and now it seems like it's changed as far as the way that you're doing it now? I mean, realistically, I don't think anything's changed. Number four, whether these are reasonable uses of the property in question. Reasonable uses. We want to make sure we have reasonable uses. Downstairs currently, um, it's being used as light industrial. They're making great cords and things like that for businesses and that's fantastic. It's exactly what you want it for. Upstairs, and certainly for the past almost eight years, my wife's been working there. She's been working her tail off since coming from China. On the third page in, I've actually provided you with a biography of what she does. And I thought I'd share that with you. Her company's name is Bodega Lotus, provides a wide range of services to clients in the following areas. She does video and photo editing, helps with distribution, and then does therapeutic massage in the following modalities. So you've got Swedish massage, deep tissue massage, and Siatsu massage. Her normal hours are Monday through Friday from 11 till 7 p.m. Yan Ling Boho, my wife, has been doing massage for over eight years since arriving in the United States. She got her citizenship and everything on her own. She's a hard worker. Yan Ling was a student at Center Point Energy, or Center Point Energy, Center Point Massage and Siatsu Therapy School and Clinic. She specialized there in Swedish, deep tissue, and Siatsu massage. Prior to her coming to the United States, my wife Yan Ling Boho was an English teacher in China, equivalent to age fifth grade through seventh grade. Currently, Yan Ling is the owner of Bodega Lotus, as more of a part-time job to bring joy to others. And in addition, she's an avid photographer and enjoys editing both photos and videos, short movies, family photos, weddings, et cetera. Upon completion of editing, Bodega Lotus helps in distributing those videos to, uh, video stores, in some cases, and otherwise other things. Her income in general is derived in three different ways. Photo and editing make up approximately 50% of what she does, which I believe is Photo and editing make up approximately 50% of what she does, which I believe is actually legal in the current situation she's in. But then she also has been doing more and more massage, and distribution makes up about 20%. So, that gives you kind of a better feel for, is this a good use for this particular property? It's 1,500 square feet. I believe that it is good use for it, but I'll leave that to you to decide. The fifth point is whether or not there's been a change to character, trend development in the general area of the property in question, which takes place since such property was placed into present zoning classification, where the amendment is to change the zoning classification for a particular property. I would tell you that things are changing. Actually, her building's changing. The gentleman that lives right next door and owns that building, he wants change. And you know what? Two blocks down the way, that you can throw a rock at, is already changed and you've approved it. So, in our minds, we're thinking, hey, we've got a good business here. You know what? If it doesn't work for us, we're a renter. We don't own that particular property. So, to us, it's move it. We'll open up somewhere else. That's fine for us. But, I think that that's a loss to Minneapolis and to that neighborhood overall, and I think that it's a loss to the person that owns that particular building and the city of Minneapolis. The revenue that she pays in taxes, certainly the owner of the building pays in taxes, and I think at the end of the day, if you're going to approve for one, two blocks away, for a very similar situation, how is this any different? And that's really what I have to say.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, is there anyone else here to speak on this item? Commissioner Slack.
Yeah, I just have a real quick comment. First off, I appreciate the packet of information. It's very thorough, and I almost wish I would have seen it for the previous application, but in hindsight, you know, I think the unfortunate part here that we have to consider is the fact that 3442 was rezoned ILOD in 2013. I personally think it's the wrong approach to individually rezone, and I think based on the conversation that we've had, more so on the previous application, is that this is going to take a more holistic approach to rezoning, especially in that part of the city. And Jason, as Mr. Wittenberg mentioned, it's something that's on the work plan moving forward, and so I'm going to make a recommendation, or subsequently, I'm going to vote to deny this application as well, because I think that we need to take a more holistic approach at zoning in this specific area. It's nothing to do with specifically these applications. I just think that overall, the whole district needs to take a, we need to take a better look at the whole district.
All right. Mr. Wittenberg, you had a comment.
Sure. Thank you. Commissioners, just to be clear about the timing of events for the small area plan revision and the previous rezoning that was approved to the industrial living overlay district at 3442, that came before the planning commission in January 22 of 2013, which was prior to the amendment to the small area plan, which, as Mr. Lisca pointed out, the small area plan has pretty mixed guidance when it comes to land use transition in the area. But, in January, on January 22 of 2013, when that rezoning was in front of you, the guidance in place at that time was urban neighborhood, which made it more clear than the current policy that transitioning to residential was the goal there. So, in June of that same year later, after that rezoning, is when the small area plan revision was adopted by the city, by the city council.
All right. Is there anyone else here who'd like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And commissioners, are there any further questions, or would someone like to start us off with a motion? Commissioner Slack.
I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation to deny the application.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on that item? Commissioner Lupe here.
May I just wanted to also echo my colleague's comments, but say that in looking at the previous ILOD, the only other ILOD in the 20-block stretch of I-2 that they have, it appears as though it isn't really precedent setting, because it's a different situation. It was industrial use where the artist wanted to live there, which is the point of the industrial living overlay. And so, I could see where, especially given that the guidance wasn't in place, as it preceded it by six months, based on the, about the Falls Plan, I'd have to say that the intent is different for the use. I don't, I'm not seeing the parallel. So, I will be supporting the motion.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please tell the role.
Slack?
Aye.
Lupe here?
Aye.
Kronzer?
No.
Diselman?
Aye.
Forni?
Aye.
So, that is four to one.
All right. And that motion carries. So, our next item on the agenda is at 3535 through 3543 Grand Avenue South. Ms. Suther is staff. And we saw this item at committee of the whole a number of weeks ago, so maybe, Shannon, you could focus on the outstanding issues, which appear to be the parking lot setbacks for the most part.
Okay. Thank you very much, and I apologize for the voice, so if you need me to repeat anything, just let me know. The subject properties include 3535, 3539, 3543 Grand Avenue South. As you'll see on page one of the staff report, there's a list of applications sought by the Lander Group, the applicant for the project, to build a three-story, multiple-family structure. As you mentioned, we had seen this at our committee of the whole previously. Here is the applicant's proposed site plan, if we can zoom in to the plan, bring it up a little more. There we go. Okay. So, here you'll see the rear of the plan. You have the proposed structure here, and there would be 18 parking stalls, a combination of standard, compact, and a handicap-accessible stall. And then, the public alley is here at the rear. Included in your packet today is a proposal by staff, which would include the denial of two of the requested variances, to reduce the interior side yard setback along the north property line and along the south property line. The applicant is seeking variances to two feet and to three feet, or five feet is required. As you can see through moving some of the elements around by simply reducing that walkway width from eight feet to three feet, we're able to provide at least the five-foot minimum interior side yard setback for that parking lot. And then, we also relocated the trash enclosure. Why that's important is that would further reduce the requested parking variance. So, as proposed, the project requires 22 off-street parking spaces. So, for a 24-unit building, they were able to take advantage of the existing transit incentive, which reduces their off-street parking requirement by two spaces. That's where, that's how we arrive at 22. They are providing 18, many of which 46%, 47% is what staff is recommending, would be compact, where 25% is the maximum allowed. As proposed, staff believes that we could get one more standard stall here, and by relocating the trash, it would provide a total of 17 off-street parking spaces, and that's how we arrive at the recommendation for the variance that you'll see on the last In addition to that, we have some noted concerns related to alternative compliance being sought by the applicant, first for exterior materials. Just show the proposed elevations. Exterior materials are durable for the first floor with the horizontal metal siding, and the upper floors would be cement board lap siding and pre-finished metal panel. The maximum percentage is suggested by staff in the city planning commission for the cement board lap siding specifically is 30% on each elevation. And we see through our calculations that the front and rear are showing about 45% and the north elevation at 48%, and the south elevation at 58%. So, staff is recommending that the applicant find an alternative material to come into compliance, or provide additional metal siding, for example, or the metal panel, so we don't have greater than 30% of the cement lap siding on each facade. Staff is recommending alternative compliance be granted to allow for the reduced landscape yards along the sides and the rear. The site being constrained as it is, in order to allow for this many of off-street parking spaces, already requires the variance. Staff believes that a five-foot landscape yard here will improve somewhat the onsite stormwater management, and you'll see in the PDR report as well, that surface water and sewers and public works has also directed the applicant to show plumbing that would take some of the drainage from the parking lot and direct it, including the roof drains towards the front of the yard, where it maximizes the amount of onsite retention. There is some known to be pooling of water in the alley. And I know that we have a few neighbors here who are, have already weighed in on that fact, I believe have additional information they'd like to provide. And then, lastly, with providing these greater interior side yard setbacks, up to the five feet, we'll have a little bit more of a landscape yard to provide the onsite deciduous tree, which is the last item for alternative compliance that the applicant is seeking, where staff is recommending the applicant come into compliance. I can give a more general overview of the project, if you like, or answer any specific questions that you have.
All right. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing on this item, and just so I have a sense, how many of you are here to speak on this item? Can I say a show? And in that case, I'll limit your comments to two minutes each, and I also ask that you try not to repeat information that's already been presented. So, we'll open the public hearing, and let's see. First speaker, yeah, please come to the microphone. Uh huh.
I'm going to do, I'm going to do one up.
Yes, that's right. Each speaker gets one opportunity to speak.
Is it possible that I can make a, a comment before I speak?
Well, you, why don't we just have you as the first speaker?
I'd rather, I'd stand, I'd rather speak.
Okay.
But I mean, it's, I didn't do it in relevance to.
Okay. We.
With like a one second.
Yeah. Actually, we should, we should have the applicant speak first. I missed that. Sorry about that. And yeah, if you could come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Pete Keely with Collage Architects. I'm here representing the Lander Group. We have Tony Correa with the Lander Group, who's also in attendance as well. I know you saw this at committee of the whole, and I believe staff did a good job of kind of indicating some of the changes. I do want to talk about some of those changes in the water. We took a good look at what was proposed in terms of site plan modifications, and we still believe that what we're proposing with the 18 stalls is the, is the right plan. Part of looking at the original parking reductions and where we're at with the 18 is we believe the 18 is the right number for this project, and that is where we want to stay. I think secondarily, we do want to minimize the impact of the parking along the alley as well. And I'd actually like to put this, put this overhead and try to zoom out here. The color version of this same site plan. On the back portion of the site, what we're really trying to do is minimize kind of the sea-of-parking approach, and although they're pulled further to the side lot, actually, for the first 40 feet, it's a one-foot setback, I believe. And we're at 45 feet to this corner, actually 45 feet, nine inches, or about five foot, nine inches over on this corner, which is the reason for the variance, the same on this corner over here. And so, for the first 40 feet, it can be within one, one foot, I believe, and staff can certainly correct me if I'm wrong. But part of the reason to pull these two parking lots apart is to provide the landscaping, actually on the inside of the site, to get the overhead tree canopy over the top of the parking, also to make it look like two individual parking lots. We're also trying to get structure along the back alley, so we do have the fences coming back, we do have the trash, and we do have a bike enclosure. The trash located where it is provides direct access, and it's enough width that people can actually walk between the cars, as opposed to a three-feet coming back out to the alley around and dump the trash off. On the two adjacent sides in question, on one side, on the north side, it is an existing garage, so we do have a fence up to that point, we do have landscaping, and on the south side, it is a surface parking lot as it is. So, with, we believe the dimension, whether it's two feet or five feet, if you've got a screen in front of it and you're on the other side, you can't really, you don't really have that impact, especially given, since it's a garage on one side and parking on the other. So, we believe this is a better plan, and better for the site and better for the users of the building that are here. I do want to talk a little bit about the parking, I'm sorry, the water, since I know that's going to come up shortly. We understand from the neighbors that there is some water issues in the neighborhood, not just this site, but those water issues are bigger than our site, as we understand. We have, we will certainly follow recommendations that are brought forth by the city and through the PDR. We will follow those recommendations, but as far as solving a bigger problem, we're going to have people live there. We want to be part of the answer, but we're not the only answer. So, we've reached out to the neighborhood group and are trying to set up a meeting to actually talk about the best solution for that, and we don't necessarily know the best solution, because we don't necessarily understand the depths of the problem outside of our project. So, we will handle what is on our project, certainly, but then anything bigger and beyond that, we're, want to work with the neighborhood group as kind of the liaison through the council member and through public works to kind of get the right answer, and we'll be there arm-in-arm to try to figure out the best solution. Finally, on the siding, we are proposing actually that that would be the 5/8 inch, the thicker cement board siding on that location, as opposed to the thinner one. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Kronzer.
Thank you. I have a few questions. So, on the areas on the north and south property lines where you're showing it looks like shrubs, is there any reason why canopy trees cannot be planted there? Next to the shed, next, yeah, right through there.
Potentially, that there could be some trees. I mean, it is a very tight zone, whether that's two feet or five feet, and then there's root structures and adjacent garages, certainly on the north side, that might become a little bit problematic, but are you suggesting adding a tree kind of along that edge?
Yeah, so I'm, I mean, one of the, one of our requirements is a 50-foot to a deciduous In that same general area, though, I don't see a fencing shown at the kind of corners of the, kind of stops if you go west.
I'm sorry, this?
No. If you were right where you're in the north, if you go west, I mean, is there an ability to put a fence kind of around the corner? Not where the green, like, yeah, right there.
Yeah, I could certainly.
Because part of the, part of the issue is the closeness of the automobiles to the property, as you're well aware. Can you explain how the exterior bike parking is working? Is there a secured gate or lock on it?
It is a secured garage-like structure, so there'd be a double door that opens up that would be, have a combination code of some, or keyed to the front entry, so that would be a secure, and that would be racks, so people would hang them vertically up along the racks.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Diselman.
I just had a question regarding the stormwater. I think that we're going to hear some comments about existing, existing problems in the alley right now with, with standing water after, after heavy rains, and I'm just curious, we've seen our report that the area is vacant right now, but what exactly is it right now? What is the surface right now? What is there?
The surface is soil. It is dirt. So, a little history on the site, won't go into too much, but the soils are really bad soils. There's a lot of clay fill, a lot of topsoil, some, actually, some other fills. So, it's problematic from a structural bearing point of view. There's probably been four other projects proposed on this site over the last number of years, all incredibly expensive because of the type of soils. And the reason I say that in terms of stormwater is that infiltration through those soils is actually somewhat problematic as well, is that there's enough density in that soil that it's not like a sand, where the water can, we can do rain garden, we can do those types of things, and the water will infiltrate. Our understanding also is that the problem is actually bigger than that, and that there's some trough in the alley that is actually creating some of those problems. So, other than accepting more water onto the site into soil that actually doesn't percolate, I think the answer is a bigger solution for the neighborhood, of which we don't actually know what that answer is, or how big the pipe, and so on and so forth.
Commissioner. If I could just follow up real quick, and maybe this is part of the bigger solution, but have you, has there any, been any discussion about having a cistern or any, any type of, you know, if the soil's not good for it, is there any, is there any room for putting any water storage on the storage on the site, perhaps to be reused as part of the development?
Yes, and we would, so from, we're directing as much water as we can from this. So the rooftop water all goes towards Grand. The back thirds where we can direct the water forward, we are, but there is a portion in the back that does, is back towards the alley. So there is some contribution. A cistern idea would be, I think is one possible solution. There's also a pipe solution. I don't think we would rule that out. I think our concern is, we, from the PDR perspective, would answer one set of questions in terms of this site. We actually don't know what the issue is from a larger, bigger perspective, in terms of how big is that cistern, and how much is being taken, and who pays for that.
Commissioner Lukey.
Yeah, hi. I was wondering if you could maybe indicate on the drawing, what, where the line is of what gets directed to the alley versus back in towards your lot? Would you say it's like a couple parking spaces or the whole lot?
We're, basically, it's kind of, you know, something like that. So this is directed this way.
But then the rest of the lot's?
And the con, I'm sorry, the contours are kind of, we're doing something, sort of like that. And then at some point, this area.
And I think just to piggyback off his questions in terms of maybe some, perhaps some further exploration of goodwill by capturing more stormwater might be something to explore further? Or do you think those discussions have kind of already been searched through, and this is as good as it's going to get?
No, I think what we're saying is we want to be part of those discussions. We understand that that is an issue. We're on the site, we have residents here with cars here, and we want to solve a problem, the problem. We just don't know what the extent of that problem is in terms of its magnitude, and we also don't feel like it's 100% our problem.
Oh, no.
So if we were to look at our site and only our site, we'd come up with one solution, but there seems to be a bigger one. So we want to go as a neighborhood, as residents within the neighborhood, with the neighborhood organization, and then go to Public Works and talk about what possible solutions may be. And if we can help facilitate that, great, but it's also, there's a cost to all of those. And, you know, if it's on our site and we're contributing to that portion of what is ours, that is one thing, but to then solve it for the entire neighborhood is a cost that this cannot bear.
Yeah, I think my point was more to just, you know, not necessarily absorbing everybody's water problem, but perhaps if it was almost a, we're not contributing any water to the problem, so you're not furthering a situation that appears to be bizarre already.
Commissioner Slaw.
I guess maybe this is a question for staff, but Public Works, have they given you any ideas or thoughts on what they'd like to see? Sorry to make you get up and walk over me.
That's great, right. They actually haven't defined a long-term solution, but they know one is necessary. I think at PDR that we talked with Jeremy Straylo from Public Works, Surface Waters and Sewers, and said that it's not currently on the capital improvement plan. But they are aware that during major storm events, there is some flooding there, and will continue, if the project is approved, to work through the next stage of PDR, Preliminary Development Review, to ensure that the site doesn't contribute in such a negative way. But that process is yet to come, but no, Public Works has not given us any additional specific feedback, other than what you saw in the PDR report, which was direct as much stormwater as you can towards Grand Avenue.
So the alley's not on the CIP?
Correct, it's not there presently. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Seeing none, we can move on to other speakers. And again, since there are several people here, I'll ask that you keep your remarks to two minutes. Who would like to be the first speaker? All right, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Afternoon, my name is Carol McGarry. I live at 3536 Pleasant, and my property is the property across the alley from the project. And I must apologize, because I, we're hearing aids, and your auditory system here and my hearing aids are not doing well, and consequently, I missed much of what staff said and the Lander representative. Water is a real problem. Attached to your package, my understanding is a memo I wrote to the Lander Group, and I'm embarrassed that I don't have photographs of it, but I drew as best I could on an aerial photograph the extent of what we generally refer to as the lake. And while I realize that's an exaggeration, when it's coming over your back fence and threatening your backyard, it feels like a lake, and it's in our garage now. And I'm, I hope that it is architecturally possible to shunt all the water from this project into pipes and out onto Grand Avenue, but somehow, as a practical human being who has watched water flow over hard surfaces, I have a very hard time believing that there isn't going to be additional water flow from this project into this alley. And it's interesting to me now that at this rather belated stage, we're talking about having meetings with Public Works and the architects and the neighborhood. I've said this at public meetings, we've got the cart before the horse here. Let's resolve the structural issue before we get to the fine points. And maybe this isn't a buildable property. I'm sure the owner doesn't want to hear that, but it, I mean, maybe the soils are so bad that it should not be built upon. I don't know that. And I think this commission needs more information before it can make an intelligent decision. I know this commission does not want to be in the business of creating more standing water problems in South Minneapolis, or Minneapolis in general. I'm aware that there are others. I've heard that a fix to this might be a catchment basin, and that, yes, there's a lot of cost to that. And indeed, I agree with the representative of the Lander Group that there's much more contributing to the standing water than simply this project, because you've got an alley here, which over the years, all of the multiple dwellings have paved from the alley up to the building, and so you've got a tremendous water flow off of the existing parking areas behind the other.
Two minutes is up.
Okay.
So we should, Commissioner Slaw, do you have any questions for the applicant or speaker, excuse me?
Maybe she could just make a concluding statement, since she didn't know that the time was running out.
Yeah, that would be fine.
I couldn't hear that.
If you'd like to make a concluding statement, that would be fine.
Just, let's do the right thing here, and let's figure out the engineering problem before we worry about six inches here and six inches there on a variance.
Next speaker. Yes, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Afternoon, members of the City Council and Planning Commission. My name is Patrick Kegley. I live in Lindell, and I'm quite near the area of 35th and Grand. I first like to bring to your attention that there was a vote at Lindell Neighborhood Association, and that vote was to deny and not support the variances, the six variances. That is, the neighborhood did not approve of this building proposal. Myself and my friends are here to express our strong opposition and concerns regarding this building being proposed for construction by Lander's Groups and Collage Architects at lot address 3535 Grand. The plan as described at meetings presented by Lander's Group may well be viewed by many of the Grand Avenue residents as impractical and invasive building in this neighborhood. I hope that the residents and committee members all here attending will concur that this proposal needs much further discussion, as would be necessary for any commercial, multifamily, new construction that is proposed for development in the city of Minneapolis. Among the important issues, I think demand careful consideration conclude the following. What would be the real impact on residents and businesses that are already existing along Grand Avenue and within a six-block radius of a three-story building that has limited above-ground parking spaces, inadequate parking spaces, in fact, for 24 units? Also, as common knowledge, there's already problems, and it's difficult to find parking along these streets.
You have 30 seconds left.
We also believe this is not affordable. They are proposing building units that would be up to 1,500 per month. The less, the smaller one for 536 square feet, I believe, would be 1,000 per month, clearly not intended as affordable nor even reasonable in monthly rent in this location. I find it objectionable, I have an objection to the fact that this does not expect, respect the needs of the people in existing communities for affordable housing. We have a crisis going on.
That's two minutes.
We have a definite crisis going on with housing for people that have low income. I'll conclude my remarks that I should be allowed to speak further, because we all have serious concerns. Present Momen has been there for quite some time, and I've worked there and visited there quite often for the last 35 years. To conclude these remarks, many residents and myself, the neighborhood, Lindell Neighborhood and Grand Avenue insist that you make the responsible decision in denying Lander's Group these six variances that they are asking for the building. It does not suit the needs of the neighborhood, and many gathered, and also in that area, stand opposed to this proposal. Thank you for your careful consideration, reflection on this matter.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Shannon Bonishraka. I live on 30, I'm so nervous, so I should definitely get through the two minutes, because I go really fast when I'm nervous. But I live on 3527 Pleasant Avenue. It's one block over from the Grand Avenue site, and I'm against the building of this building, because it'll add increased parking strain to the neighborhood. On our Pleasant Avenue block, we lose on one side of the block about 25% of the block's parking, because it's a handicap space. On the Grand Avenue side, in front of where they're having the building, we lose again about 1/3 of the block, because it's a bus stop. Not to mention that 35th Street is a snow emergency. 36, 35th and 36th Street are both snow emergency streets, along with Grand Avenue, which are snow emergency streets, which has tremendous parking problems in the winter. My other reason, as a mother of people, a mother of kids in the neighborhood, we have what's called the Lindell walking bus in our neighborhood, and it starts out on 37th and Pillsbury. At about 8:00 in the morning, we have 50, 60 kids walking down the street, trying to cross, trying to cross 36th Street to get, and then cross 35th Street again, to get up to Lindell School at 34th. It takes, sometimes when my daughter and son, who, they go to Minneapolis Public Schools and take the city bus, they have to wait sometimes five to 10 minutes just to get across 36th Street to get down to a bus. Then I also have to add that coming out of the alley on 35th Street and 36th Street, I personally know people that have gotten into accidents, because there's cars parked on the street, and they can't see, and they have to pull out into the street. It's nothing on weekends for traffic to be backed all the way from 35W over to Lindell Avenue, and people sitting, Harriet Avenue, Grand Avenue, Lindell Avenue, Pillsbury Avenue, can't get out. Can't get out of their block, because the traffic is so backed up. And then they're going to put this stuff on the corners. My son was hit one time by a car that was trying to avoid a light at Grand Avenue, because that's another thing that happens, is the traffic light at Grand Avenue. People see it and don't want to sit in traffic, so then they turn down the more residential streets and go racing down them. My son, when he was seven, was hit by a car that was trying to beat a light at Grand Avenue to avoid traffic. I just can't emphasize enough how many parking problems there are in the neighborhood. And then to add to the drainage issue, now we'll go from Carol and her person in her duplex having drainage problems, to maybe 17, 18 people who can't get out of the parking lot, because there's drainage in the alley. I agree with her. Fix the drainage before you put a building on there, because now you're going to have more people with drainage problems and problems getting out in the morning. And I don't believe that people that can afford $1,000 to $1,500 a month rent are not going to have vehicles.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Anyone else would like to speak? Go ahead. Please state your name and address for the record.
Right here? Yeah. Hi, my name is Tran Mueller, 3546 Grand, right across the street. Numerous, many, many discussion points that I have. Unfortunately, we only have a limited amount of time, but I will make that comment that I feel that this does require much more discussion to appropriately address the proposal. You've probably got a couple of letters that were submitted to you by applicants, neighborhood members that are opposed to the project. I'll reiterate the statement made earlier, that the neighborhood did vote against the proposal recently at a neighborhood meeting. It was an official vote. And regarding the comments being made, I guess I wanted to make this statement earlier, is that they are all very relevant to the variances in that they, without consideration of these, of these problems or issues that we're proposing on the project, the, the variance requests should not be, should not be granted due to the fact that if you allow these variance requests, you become an accomplice to all these problems that we are discussing, being that basically, the building is creating. It's evidenced by, with the setback variances on all three sides. Setback variances being required on all three sides indicate that the building is too large, too many units for the site. If it wasn't, they wouldn't require the setback variances for the parking or the front. They could build a much smaller building and satisfy the parking requirements and the setbacks very easily, if it was, say, 12 units instead of 24. And again, I'll reiterate the affordability of housing, 1,000 and up for a month is not in keeping with the fabric of the community, which is what developers have said, and they're trying to do before. And we had over 200 signatures against this, another project similar back in 2012, that we submitted to you folks that were from the neighborhood, that were against it in a petition. And so, yeah, we're voting to deny the approval of the variances for a variety of reasons. Small businesses, it's going to hurt small businesses across the street that have been functioning for over 35 years. You know, we're in keeping with just more affordability, just mixed use, not just strictly density-oriented type of development, which this project definitely falls into the category of. So I motion to deny the request for the variances, and respectfully appreciate your time.
Thank you. And Commissioner Lukey, here, you have a question for the speaker?
Yes, I do. Okay, so just to recap, to make sure I have a full understanding, can you tell me if I'm missing anything? For the most part, everyone is opposed to this because of the lack of parking, the water concerns, and the lack of affordable housing. Is there anything else?
There's many other things that, reasons behind the opposition.
Can you, maybe perhaps just briefly speak to those in a kind of a bullet point form? That way we can take them under consideration when looking at these?
One more time, I'm sorry.
Can you, I'm sorry, I have a bit of allergy situation going on. Can you perhaps list those just really succinctly? That way we have a full understanding of the breadth of concerns you guys have?
I can try.
That way we can address them, because I think we've heard those three pretty loud and clear, but I just need to make sure that when we talk about the required findings, we have a good understanding of what your thoughts were. So just maybe really quickly touch on?
Bullet point style, just real quick? Okay, I'll try, because there's a lot, and it's, I'm limited on time here, but, okay, yeah, definitely, okay, we'll go down the list. Affordability of housing, which, you know, there's lots of reasonings behind each reason, too. So parking, green space is another one. I feel that there needs to be more green space in the, you know, we have a lot of development coming up, and there's not a lot of affordable development. And, you know, we're advocating that it would be nice to have a community garden, or maybe a pocket park, something like that, in the community right there. It's been vacant lot for 40 years. I mean, and the community's done quite well, actually. So that's another one that we didn't mention. And there's also, yep, there's also the fact that it will, it's going to present a lot of, as all large developments do, a lot of disruptive nuisance oriented, I mean, with the construction processes is, can be quite invasive as well. It's just, I know it's a temporary problem, but it's, we, we're not very keen on that as well. And then, you know, effective small businesses, though it's going to be harmful to the small businesses, C-1 District, which is the smallest commercial district that you guys have zoning for, being, supporting middle class, is what we feel strong on, small businesses do. The, not in keeping with the area points that we've mentioned, will also affect the small businesses, because... small businesses because it's going to put a strain again on the parking for the customers as well as the, the type of store that it is, that one of the businesses, it's a metaphysical holistic store that's very kind of in keeping with, kind of when people come into the store, they're looking for a, just a vibe that they get, like a kind of a relaxed, peaceful energy when they come into the store. They're looking to relax, they're not looking to come into like a real dense...
Can I really get back in for just a minute here? Just because when we have to make our findings, we have to base them on uncertain criteria or else we're not allowed to go through anyway. So can you...
Small businesses is basically...
Not keeping with the vibe isn't something we can list as a...
I was just describing why the small businesses are affected. I was trying to elaborate a little bit, so, but that was, the main point was the harmful to small businesses, basically. So that would be the fourth or the fifth.
Because of the parking or because of something else?
Well, I was just talking about the relaxed atmosphere that customers...
So the character of the building? Is that what you're saying?
The character of the proposed development building? Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And is there anything else?
Will affect the small businesses, absolutely. What?
Is there anything else then on your list?
Yeah, I believe that's five, or five bulleted points. There's, yeah, the water, I mentioned, that's about five or six bulleted points. There's also, you know, I think it's invasive to the house on the north side. They have a single family there. They're setback at 20, 22, 25 feet. You know, I don't think they wanted a huge structure right next door with kids playing around, you know? And it's, it's not really synonymous with a small, single-family home. The other large buildings around are, you know, 11 units, 10 units, you know, less than half the size. Those are the larger of the buildings that are nearby. The others, you have duplexes, houses and coreplexes. So again, not in keeping with the environment of the neighborhood. So environmental reasons, I feel, are another reason that's kind of related to the green space. Traffic is blocked during construction. That could create a hazard. I know on your attributes of why variances are requested or granted or not pertain to whether or not practical difficulties exist that are not based on economic considerations alone. If you're building a large building and that's obviously considering economics as at least one point of the agenda, you know, you're not considering another point of the, why variances are requested or not, which is health, safety. We've talked about the traffic and one of the speakers had mentioned, her son had gotten hurt in an accident with the traffic flow. If you have a tight parking lot with 18 spots and ice and snow in the wintertime, it's going to get blocked, it's going to create a safety hazard as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Anne Gasky, and I live on 35th and Grand, just a few doors down from Present Moment. And I'll try to say something new, but I do agree with everything that was said so far against the proposal. I think what Tran was trying to articulate about customers coming to Present Moment is like, if that block is now known as like tight-packed parking, kind of like Uptown is, when you try to go to Uptown, you're like, am I up for that? Trying to search, you know, drive around in circles for a while for a parking spot? Maybe not, you know? And I think that's what we're looking at is, I think that we're probably looking at a permitted parking situation very soon, and I think that's why we had so many signatures when that other petition came up. And I guess we didn't have time to do another petition, but right now, in the summertime, there's just barely enough parking. There is enough parking. For instance, let's say I come home at 10:00 at night, there might not be a spot for me on Grand. That's where I would normally go into my front door. So I drive around to Harriet, and there's, I can usually find one on Harriet. Now, in the wintertime, completely different situation. I mean, you add another, I don't even know what it would be, but I'm guessing at least 12 to 15 extra cars because of that new development. You know, that's going to stretch it. I mean, that's not even counting guests, but like, you know, let's say half of those people have two cars. That's 12 people plus the 17 spots that you didn't allow for, you know, everybody having one car. Okay. The other thing that I really agree with Carol and what she said about, you know, why not do the study and do the homework before you build the construction and find out what's going on with water situation? If you're directing all this new water toward Grand, there is a low spot on Grand, it happens to be right in front of my building. And I've kind of studied it for a while because I had water inside my, the floor of my car once, and I noticed that in a really, really heavy rain, the water does already splash up against the boulevard on the, it really dramatically, the road slants toward Grand on that one side, on the even side of the street. So I would be kind of wondering like how much extra water is going to be directed toward Grand Avenue when, you know, really high rain situation. So I guess it's probably all my time.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? No, no, you had your chance to speak. All right. Well, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, we have seven applications before us. Is there any discussion or would someone like to start us off with a motion? Commissioner Gisselman?
I just had a couple of questions for staff. Shannon, in reading in the report, just regarding landscape, landscaping in and around the parking lot, there's a paragraph that talks about staff suggesting, recommending that the planning commission grant alternative compliance to requiring a seven-foot landscape yard, essentially, but instead requiring a five-foot landscape yard along the alley and along the side yards next to the parking lot. Is that correct?
It would just be along the north and south interior side yards. So there wouldn't, there may be sufficient area for shrubs, but definitely not trees. And I believe what's proposed along the alley is approximately three feet. But that additional two feet on the south side and three feet on the north side hopefully would be enough to provide the deciduous tree for proximity for the parking stalls. It'd have to be no more than 50 feet from the center.
And so is that, is that something that we would require perhaps as one of the conditions under site plan review?
Let me just go back to where recommendations were. We couldn't state further, more specifically regarding the quantity of the green space. By denial of the requested variances, and that's, it requires a minimum of a five-yard interior side yard setback, the granting of alternative compliance wasn't specifically noted as a finding, except for the proposed parking stalls be located within 50 feet of the center of the trees.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question was for you, Jason, and that was just regarding, and obviously regarding this water, water problem. I mean, I hesitate to think that it is a problem that this applicant should bear all by themselves. Because again, I mean, we certainly have information before us that suggests that there is a large pooling of water, but we don't have a lot of information that tells us where exactly it's coming from. I guess what I am curious about is in our process of approval today or conditions that we may approve moving forward, what, what kind of language can we use to really, I guess, bind the applicant into working with Public Works and the neighborhood in finding, you know, whatever that long-term solution is?
Commissioners, Commissioner Gisselman, certainly, first and foremost, you'll want to take a look at whether any of the applications in front of you and the findings that you're required to make are applicable to that issue specifically. But beyond that, certainly you have the ability through site plan review to require that the applicant continue to work with Public Works toward a solution. We, of course, can't require that a non-city entity have kind of final approval authority over a solution, but we can certainly encourage that they continue to work with the neighborhood. But ultimately, that final authority will have to rest with Public Works on working with the applicant toward a solution that will be approved.
Commissioners, any further discussion or would someone like to start us off with a motion? Commissioner Cron.
I will get the ball rolling here this evening. I'd like to move site plan review approval with the full six stated conditions and adding a seventh. The applicant shall work with staff to participate in a fair share manner to help solve the stormwater issue in the alley.
All right. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second on item 6G, the site plan review.
Just a comment. You know, the stormwater issue is a larger issue in this applicant and his application and denying this, this proposal is not going to solve any issues. And the applicant has stated here at a public hearing that they're willing to help solve the problem. So I think doing nothing is not going to fix anything. Approving this, this project now, getting the development going will provide more financial feasibility to actually having them participate financially in this. So I would support that.
Commissioner Lukey here.
I have a question for staff. Hey, Shannon. Real quick, what is there a lot area coverage for impervious surfaces? Because it seems very large on the drawings.
It is. It covers 79% of the lot. The maximum impervious surface in the R5 district is 85%. So they're under, they didn't require the variance, but it is a change from what's there right now.
And in terms of landscaping requirements, are they meeting the basic requirements?
They are. There's, as the applicant proposed, 3,277 square feet of landscaped area, which is, I apologize, it's in the staff report. It's greater than the 20% required. And then with staff's recommendation, it's increased from there. Just, I'm sorry, I didn't have that ready.
And if I could just add to that, while she's looking up additional information, although they meet or exceed their 20% requirement, that as has been discussed, the current proposal doesn't meet their required landscape yards on the north, south, and east sides of the parking lot.
I'm having here that 18, about 1,850 square feet is required, where 3,200 square feet, probably closer to 33 or 400 square feet is provided. So not quite twice as much. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion on the motion to approve the site plan review? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Aye.
Gisselman?
Aye.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Lukey here?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
5-0.
All right. And that carries, we have six other applications, all variances, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll keep going. I'll make a motion and have a few comments as well. I'd like to move approval of variance E to reduce the north side yard setback to two feet and variance F to reduce the south side yard setback to three feet. In both, in both variances, I'd like to add a condition that the proposed landscape screen be extended to, to return around the northwest and southwest corners of the parking lot. So basically kind of hem in around to the west side of the parking lot. The primary reason for keeping that center space in my mind the same is that it, that could actually help in the solution to the water issue. One, one solution might be to try to capture all the stormwater hitting that parking lot on-site and being able to tip those two parking lots to the center of the site might actually help keep that water on-site versus trying to bring it to the edges of the property. So I feel the, with kind of the unknown solution to the water issue and also the fact it is, in my mind, a better design to the parking lot that we should approve as, as proposed.
All right. Is there a second? All right. We have a, we have a second further discussion on this motion on variances E and F. Commissioner Lukey here.
Yeah, I'm a little torn on these variances. I'm inclined to think one way because of the water situation, and I'm inclined to think the other way because of the parking situation. If we make them keep the setbacks, also we lose parking. If we give them the setbacks so they have more parking, we have a bigger water problem. So I'm a little bit torn as to what to do. I guess I'd be more inclined to give, to give them the parking if, if they were inclined to retain, guarantee retain 100% of their water on-site. I think that would be a nice gesture, and I think, given the land coverage and the lack of really substantial vegetation and plantings that, that they have around their parking lot, it would be appropriate. But I guess I'm open to hear what my colleagues have to think. So I, I think it's kind of a difficult choice to make.
Further discussion on the motion to approve variances E and F. Commissioner Gisselman?
Well, I guess I would just, in, in response to what Commissioner Lukey here said, I'm not sure what exactly the motion would be, but, I mean, I would, I think that I would support the idea of allowing more variance for the parking lot if we can solve some of the parking, if, if in fact there is a solution that will allow more of the water to be retained on-site. So again, I guess, I, I would support what you just said. I'm just not sure exactly how we're going to accomplish that in our work here.
Any further discussion on that motion?
Can I move to amend the motion then?
Yes.
So I guess, and this would apply to both of them, I would move to approve the application to the variances. And then at the end of the sentence, I would say, provided they accommodate 100% of the stormwater to be retained on-site. And that would be referring to the stormwater created by their site, not, not everyone's stormwater on their site.
Mr. Wittenberg, maybe you can...
Commissioners, I'm a little leery about the 100% retention requirement. I think that partly limits the kinds of options that Public Works might actually work with them to come up with. So I would just be cautious about a 100% on-site retention requirement. And just also note that maybe this has been a little bit overlooked, but one portion, one component of staff's recommendation, Commissioner Cronzer referred to whether it would be practical to include trees on the north and south landscaped yards, north and south of the parking lot. That becomes more practical within a five-foot space. And I'll just note that deciduous trees can have the potential to intercept an awful lot of stormwater before it gets to ground, but just a consideration.
Then I rescind my amendment, I guess.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second to approve items E and F. Those are the variances related to the parking lot setbacks with the seventh condition that the applicant work with staff to resolve the stormwater issues. Clerk, please call the roll.
No.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Lukey here?
No.
Slack?
No.
So that's three no's and one yes.
All right. And that motion failed. And actually, I stated the wrong condition in my notes, that that condition was related to additional parking lot screening. So that motion to approve those variances has failed. Mr. Wittenberg, do we need, is, does that constitute denying the variances?
Commissioners, ideally, you'd have another motion.
Okay. Would someone like to make an alternative motion related to items E and F? Commissioner Slack?
I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation to deny variances, item E and F.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Gisselman?
Aye.
Cronzer?
Oh.
Aye.
Lupe here?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
So that's three to one.
Okay. And we have four more variances, items A, B, C, and D. Commissioner Slack?
I will make a motion to approve staff recommendations for items A through D.
Any further discussion on that motion? Commissioner Lupe here.
I mean, I just wanted to briefly address some of the concerns that the community members had in terms of, I think you had a lot of really heartfelt concerns that I, I think resonate a lot with a lot of people up here, especially, I would say, the affordable housing component. It's something that's lacking, but unfortunately, it's nothing that we can make a ruling on in regard to these variances for. So we can't, we can't mandate that they make it affordable or that they have certain rental rates. So as much as I am really sympathetic to the, to the lack of affordable housing throughout the city, it's not something that I can, we can specifically point to as a finding for denial of those variances. No, unfortunately, you can't.
No, the public hearing is closed.
I will say that for some of these, I, the point you made about the tiny house to the north and how it's going to feel dwarfed is probably true. Unfortunately, that whole area is zoned R5, which indicates that future proposed growth for that area of the city is R5. So they're not asking for anything overly burdensome for that zoning classification. And in fact, they didn't even, they didn't, they didn't apply for a height variance or anything, so it's, it's well within the allowable envelope. So believe me, I think a lot of people up here are sympathetic to many of the points you made. At the same time, it's also not too offensive. It's a very attractive building, however you feel about it. So I'm not dissing the, the project as it is, that by any means. I'm just saying that the requirements we're required to find, were not there for us to be able to make a motion against these variances legally. So I just want to let you know that you're, you haven't been ignored. We have heard you. We can only rule on certain things.
Any further discussion on items A through D? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Gisselman?
Aye.
Crowzer?
Aye.
Lupe here?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
It's four to zero.
All right. And that motion carries. We can move on to our next item on the agenda this evening, which is item number seven, the Hawthorne Eco Village project, Lowry Avenue North, Lindale Avenue North, and Sixth Street North. And staff is Ms. Barak.
Good evening, commissioners. There are several applications that are before you that are associated with the Hawthorne Eco Village apartment complex. This has been polled by the applicant.
Please take your discussion out in the hall, if you don't mind.
So this has been polled by the applicant to discuss two specific conditions of approval this evening. So I'd like to keep the, the presentation short and tailored to that, but I'd be happy to also give you a brief overview. So however, I'll start with a very brief overview of the applications, and then we'll kind of roll into the conditions of approval. So there are five properties that are associated with this particular development of the Hawthorne Eco Village apartments. They do require rezoning, a conditional use permit for planned unit development, site plan review, and then preliminary and final plat. So the parcels in question, of course, are those that are fronting on Lowry, Lindale, and then Sixth Street North. It's this chunk of the site that is shaded. The only parcel that is currently zoned to R2 is the parcel that abuts, the very long parcel that abuts Lowry. The other four parcels to the south are zoned to R4. The applicant proposes to rezone those to R2. Just quickly for context, this is the four-block area that is considered part of the larger master plan for the Hawthorne Eco Village, which is something that the applicant has been working with and with the neighborhood for many, many years on. And this particular parcel has always been slated for a development similar to what is being proposed today. Just very generally regarding the layout of the site, we looked at the set committee of the whole, I think, a little bit over a month ago, and it was very well received. There are a lot of different sustainable aspects of this specific project. There is a four-story component of the building and a three-story component of the building. Three stories fronts on Lowry, where there's a setback from basically zero to three feet for the building. And the four-story component is located adjacent to Lowry Avenue. That setback of the building and allocation is approximately seven feet. The interior side yard setback, adjacent to the non-conforming grocery store, is at 11 feet. It's compliant. And then the setback says you round the corner to Sixth. It's a 51-foot setback to the edge of the building wall for the apartment building and six feet to the townhomes that are located in the back. So again, three and four stories for the building. It's 71 units. There are 68 parking stalls that are located within the structure, and then two two-unit townhomes for a total of 75 units on this specific site. So this bird's eye perspective really shows how the massing is done on the site. It shows again the two, two attached townhome units at the back of the site. Again, Sixth, Lowry, and Lindale are your contacts. Four-story component again, adjacent to Lindale, three adjacent to Lowry Avenue. We are recommending approval of all of the applications this evening. The two conditions of approval, however, that the applicant wanted to address were specific to conditions three and four of the site plan review. And so just to kind of highlight what the recommendation was from a staff perspective, and we did talk a little bit about this at the committee of the whole, one being that if I'm standing on Sixth and I'm looking towards the apartment building, towards the interior courtyard portion of the site, one of the things that we talked about were the entrances that line the interior of the site. And so condition three is relative to that, and basically it's suggesting that this entrance point be reoriented towards the public street. So that's condition number three. The applicant would like to keep it as it's currently proposed, which again, there would be four principal entrances off that interior component for the two townhome units. So again, this is condition three. And then there's one other condition that the applicant has concerns with that staff recommended, which was limiting some of the, the material color on the nichihaw panels on the front face of the building and at the interior courtyard. One of the things that we had talked about too at committee of the whole was just trying to limit the number of building materials and the colors. And they did make one of the design changes that both staff and the planning commission had suggested as being appropriate at that time. It was on this face of the building. I don't have the old drawings, but basically what was shown is that it was all sort of a grayish, sort of silverish cement board product all on the face of that building. They wrapped the brick and they basically brought the color from the fourth floor of the building down into the first, second, third, and fourth floors on that elevation. So they have simplified it. We'd like them to go a bit further, which is the reason for the recommendation. There is a blow-up of the color panels that they're proposing on the front part of the building, and there are basically five different colors of nichihaw panels that are proposed on the building. And so this breaks it down, A through E, showing the different variations in colors, obviously greens, yellows, and white. And just kind of showing contextually, too, as you'll recall, there was a fairly significant grade change on the site. So basically, at grade the building is when you're at the southeast corner of Lowry and Lindale, so basically zero. And then as you cut across the site heading east, there's basically a 10-foot grade change from this edge of the building into this edge of the building. So basically, what you have is you have not only exposed block, concrete masonry, sort of burnished block on the lower base of the building that is being masked to some degree with some living wall panels, but you've got the brick, you've got that burnished block, which will be a different color and a different material. You have a fiber cement in the yellow. And then you also have this other fiber cement wood-looking product, and then combined with the mixture color palette for the nichihaw panels on the front and then at the interior of the site. And just, this is probably, actually, this is probably the best elevation showing the interior of the site of how that's on both the front and then located in the interior courtyard elevations as well on the south and on the east elevation. But in essence, when you look at sort of the blended materials along sort of the most important or primary facade of the building, you're looking at five different materials and you're looking at nine different colors. And so that was the reason why we had requested as part of condition number four that the nichihaw panels that are located on that north elevation and then at the interior of the site be limited to two colors as opposed to allowing the five. So just trying to simplify it a bit more, the, the site itself and the design of the building, obviously, that was very much recommended by staff. In fact, just as a kudos, the landscape plan was probably one of the most amazing landscape plans I've seen in a long time with everything from fruit-growing trees to just a ton of canopy trees on the site. So very well landscaped, very well done. We just thought that these two small, minor amendments to their site plan would really improve it further. So I'll close here.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing for this item. I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first. And since we've seen this project before at committee of the whole, I'd, I'd like you to address the, both the orientation of the townhomes and the color issue that were raised by staff.
Okay.
So please state your name.
I'm Abby Lusson. I work with Project for Pride and Living. And I'll be talking about item three, and Bart will talk about item four. So we're really just here. Thanks for listening to us present a few more facts about these. We're not going to go on and on. But essentially, our project, is there a master plan in your packet? Our project was designed so that the townhouses, the big building, all reinforce and kind of activate that community green. So that's why the, the entrances to the townhouses face the community green. Second, moving the principal entrance for that townhome to the, what would be the east elevation would make the, the floor plan pretty tight. Right now, it's designed very efficiently with all the circulation within the unit kind of on the inside. We're also trying to make all the townhouse entries very consistent. And the, the last point is that since this is a Minnesota housing-funded project, we need to make all the entrances to all the units visitable, so it needs to be on an accessible route. And moving it over would just make that a little bit more difficult, a little bit more ramping needed. So those are our facts about that item, and look forward to hearing your discussion.
Thank you.
Chair and commissioners, I'm Bart Nelson with Urban Works Architecture. I just want to go over the condition of the multiple colors. From the very beginning, working with our client and with the community, it was always important to go, to be adherent to the master plan as much as possible. And one of the things that came out of the master plan was this image here. That was brought up as being a vibrant scheme of color that activates what was intended to be the entrance to the building. So we have an approach to the building that was at the front, the north. It was supposed to announce the entry to the building as a, as a splash of color, multicolors. It was also meant to anchor the end of the green space, so on the west end of the green space, there was also a splash of color that would kind of terminate that green space and anchor it. The other thing that came up in community meetings was the, the desire for adding a sort of diversity of color. So it wasn't meant to be one or two colors. There was, there was a desire to have sort of diversity of color and, and not just a series of brick façades separated by one color. So those are the reasons we, we added the splash of color at the entrance and at the inside of the courtyard. And I guess we would, would like to have a consider not limiting it to just two. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Cronze?
I have a question, maybe it's more for Abby. I'm disappointed not to see any private outdoor space in this project. We don't see a market rate project that doesn't have private outdoor space. Maybe that's more of a comment than a statement. Is there anything that's driving not having balconies on this project other than money?
Maintenance and money. So we, we have balconies actually on the Lowry side. We have entrances for the, maybe a plan would help. So balconies on the first floor along the Lowry side here. And then these units step right out onto the community green as well. And there's this really big outdoor space for everyone to share, so.
Yeah, it'd really help with eyes in the street to have upper floors with balconies on, no matter how small. I know Commissioner Lupe here would disagree with me, but the, but getting people out, physically outside and having eyes on the street just is so much better than having a window that it's double glazed, it's reflective, it's, it's just better. And it's, it's a pattern we see in affordable housing projects in the city, and I just, I'm just always disappointed in it, so it's okay.
We, we have our internal standard, which says no balconies. So we're already kind of going above and beyond our usual here. And it is mostly a maintenance issue, not so much a upfront cost issue, although that's also a concern.
All right. Well, is there anyone else here to speak on this item? Seeing no one, and commissioners, I don't know if you have any other questions for the speakers. In that case, I will close the public hearing. And is there any further discussion, or would someone like to start us off with a motion? Four applications before us. Commissioner Slack?
I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation for item A rezoning.
All right. Any further discussion on the motion to approve the rezoning? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Slack?
Aye.
Lupe here?
Aye.
Crowzer?
Aye.
Gisselman?
Aye.
4-0.
And Commissioner Slack?
I'll make a motion to approve item B, conditional use permit.
All right. Any further discussion on the conditional use? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Gisselman?
Aye.
Crowzer?
Aye.
Lupe here?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
4-0.
Commissioner Slack, do you have a motion for one or both of the other two items?
I have a motion to approve item C, site plan review, with an amendment to item three. I want to strike item three.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Cron?
Yeah, I, I guess I kind of like, really in this condition four, I kind of like the, the limited splash of color at the entry on this building. So I would be in favor of limiting the, the design of the building as it's designed without an expansion of color. I don't feel super strongly about that if others don't.
All right. Commissioner Lupe here.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I'm just going to focus on the two points that are under contention, because I don't think any of us are really opposed to one, two, five, six, and seven. So just in regard to three and four, I would say that it was, it's nice to see for item number three, I think that the biggest kind of change in heart that I had in regard to this was because the palette got kind of more refined and simplified, and it ties those townhouses in with the rest of the building more effectively to where I think to the casual observer, it's almost going to feel like the building feels like it's connected. So I'm shockingly not as opposed to not having that principal entrance on the street as much as facing the courtyard since there's three others anyway, and since it feels like it's united with the other buildings. That said, on number four, I think that that splash of color over that entrance is kind of interesting, but I think that the yellow everywhere else is shocking, and it's going to look dated right away. And unfortunately, once it's, it's there, it's going to be there for the next 50 years. And as someone who lived in this neighborhood for 13 years until recently, unfortunately, I, I, I would be loath to see that happen, because it's, it's actually the thing that's really similar to the, the same yellow that's on two other affordable housing projects in North Minneapolis that I can think of on major thoroughfares. So I would be inclined to do a trade-off almost and say you're allowed to do that, you know, plethora of colors over the entry, but the other bays of color tone it down and find some refined element to kind of make it more grounded, because it is still a historic neighborhood, and there's a lot of character in the houses to draw from. And even the Eco Village kind of, I think, the most successful projects kind of hearken back to the history rather than loud, flashy, in-your-face, you know, color, you know? So I would say that would be my comment on it. I don't want to word that here, except to say maybe, I guess I'm looking, maybe staff could help find wording that would say, yay, in that one area, you can have your five colors, but everywhere else, I don't want to say no color. five colors, but everywhere else, I don't want to say no color because everything's a color, but a nice neutral, I don't know, something that's not so loud everywhere else. So I don't, I guess I'd be curious, and the, and the inside courtyard, I don't know, once again, if it defines the, the main community entrance back in, just so it's showing common space maybe, but I'm not sure it needs to wrap that whole extent, it seems a little bit excessive and, and, you know, it'd feel noisy to me just looking at it. So not, not as peaceful and relaxing as that garden you just created, it would be like, so anyway, that's my thoughts on it. I'm not sure how to word those thoughts in terms of refining item number four, but, so I maybe, maybe my colleagues can help me word that appropriately.
All right, so we have a, a motion and a second to, to approve item C, the site plan review with the seven stated conditions, with the exception of condition three, which has been struck. Condition four addresses the colors, maybe, maybe we just change the language of that to suggest that the applicant work with staff to refine the color palette, although maybe we want to provide a little bit more detail or direction around that.
So maybe work with staff to refine the color palette to reflect collage of color over the principal entrance only and a more subdued palette for the other bays. Does that sound like it's the intent across? Okay, yay.
Yeah. Commissioner Kronzer?
Commissioner Lukey, you're specifically referring to the yellow bays, not the more rusty colored.
Yes, yes, specifically to the McDonald yellow, yes.
Just the yellow, the greens, and the whites. Rest of it is really good.
All right, so, so again, we have a motion and a second to approve item C, the site plan review with the seven stated conditions, with the exception of item three, which has been struck, and item four has been reworded to, to limit the, to, to work with staff to refine the color palette, limiting the various colors over the principal entrances only, specifically, and specifically removing the yellow color. All right, I think we have that. Is there any further discussion on the site plan review? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Gisselman?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lukey Pierce?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Four to zero.
Okay, and that carries, and our last item is item D, the plat.
Make a motion to approve staff recommendation for item D, preliminary and final plat.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Slack?
Aye.
Lukey Pierce?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Gisselman?
Aye.
It's four to zero.
That carries. That concludes our business for this evening. We have a Committee of the Hall meeting this Thursday, and our next regular meeting is Monday, June 15th. Mr. Wittenberg?
Just a reminder that this Thursday's meeting includes the joint public hearing with Capitol Long Range Improvements Committee.
All right, and we are adjourned.